Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the February 3rd, 2021, meeting of the full board for our first board work session for the fiscal year 2022 budget for covering the latter part of 2021 and the initial part of 2022. Tonight will be the opening presentation, and for that I will pass it on to our business administrator, Mr. Dunn.
Okay. Thank you. So tonight's presentation, as Mr. Richards said, is, well, I'm trying to move the slide along.
Well, while you do that, do, I do believe, do we have to take roll here today? I think as a full board, we probably should. So Gina, while Jack is setting up, would you please call the, the roll for, for the board?
Yeah, I don't actually have my notes with me, so I will, I will have to do it by memory.
I'll fill in if you missed someone.
Yep, Ms. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Weinberg.
Here.
Ms. Hastings.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Menzel.
Here.
Um, gosh, who am I forgetting?
Ms. West.
Ms. West, I'm sorry.
Here.
Mr. Richards?
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Kate.
Um, I don't anticipate that we'll have any votes tonight, but if there are any votes, we will also do it by roll. But at this point, Mr. Dunn, are you prepared?
Ready to go.
All right, then I'll pass it off to you.
Okay. So this file will be posted in the morning for the public, but it is in your Google Drive at this location as well. For tonight's agenda, we'll go through some important dates, the three major funds that we deal with, some of the limited goals that we had for this year, the what-if, staffing proposals or changes, general fund overview, we'll go through the expenditures, revenues, budget summary, some other considerations as we move through this budget, the proposed scheduled meetings, and then any questions you may have. Again, this is just a high-level look at the budget, and when we get to the end, you'll see what that impact will be of this budget. So for important dates, just want to highlight that we, the budget you're talking about runs from July 1st to June 30th. So that would be July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 20, not 30, 22, sorry. Maybe in Congress it might because it's just a continuing resolution, but tax assessment year, for the purposes of the tax rate setting we do in October, is April 1st to March 31st. So there's three major funds. We have the general fund, the food service fund, and the grants and special funds. So under the general fund, that's our annual operating budget, which specifically affects the tax rate. And then you have the food service program, which is a federal program, and is required at the end of the year to be at zero or have a surplus. And then the grants are any state or federal grants or private funds or donations that we set up. Mostly tonight, we're going to focus on the general fund. So when we talk about the budget goal, yep.
Would you explain the part about the food service and how we must make it whole?
Yeah, so the food service doesn't, is funded through the sale of meals and reimbursements from the federal government for, depending on the free, reduced, and paid status. And then we get three cents for breakfast from the state. And then any of that money, plus the local sales of any commodities, whether we're selling chips or any other thing, that all needs to make up the, the budget. So all the salaries, everything is in that budget, and it needs to come to a zero. If there's a shortage, we need to have the general fund support that program. I will tell you this, since Donna is, I think, getting ready to go on her fifth year, and since she arrived, we went from going to back-to-back $120,000 deficits to a $70,000 when she got here, to 50, to 30, to the last two years had been, prior to this past, $20,000 surpluses. So Donna, her and the staff have done a phenomenal job in trying to do it. Once COVID hit, we had a $283,000 deficit last year that the general fund picked up. Now fortunately, we had some significant savings in various budget line items, and you made, we had come to you, if you remember, on June 25th, with a number of recommendations to start moving those funds. We had a finance committee on June 11th where we vetted all that, but we had to make that whole. We didn't have a choice, but we wanted to go through that process. So again, that, the food service fund needs to be made whole at the end, and if there's a surplus, we just carry that surplus to the next year. It is unfortunate because we did have over a hundred, some thousand dollar surplus prior to that. So we went through that, plus the general fund had to support it. So I feel like we're back to zero again, you know? Okay, so for regular education, we had two simple goals here, or three, I should say. Class size is within the policy. We increased the extended learning opportunity at the high school from a .6 to a 1.0. And that our plan is to try to use as much as these new ESAR funds, that's about $4.3 million we just discussed, to try to, to support this budget. We tried to put very limited in what is new here, and if it is new here, we've offset it with transfers from the expendable trust funds, or we'll put that planning into those COVID funds, depending on how we can use them, which those details are still being vetted. For student services, we have picked up the balance of what was grant-funded for SAP counselors, and that's a contracted service. And again, we're going to use the ESAR funds to support student needs as it relates to student services. For technology, we're going to upgrade the one-to-one devices at Runlet. It's going to be about 985 student devices, and then upgrade the wireless access points That has a 60% reimbursement from E-Rate that we're eligible for. They call that category two, and that was something we did five years ago. For those that were on the board may remember that we did a, like a $1.3 million lease. That's been paid off, and now it's been five years, so we're up again, and we're looking to do a replacement of that equipment. We're going to update, upgrade teacher laptops, that's about 175, and modernize human resource because right now, everything is paper. So you are going to see a couple line items that move to technology, for online recruiting, to cast a wider net, to online benefits enrollment. And then finally, the facilities and debt service. Since 2005, the board has tried to maintain 5% of its general fund towards debt, and what that does is that goes into the facilities and renovation trust fund, and the purpose of that is to pay for a significant capital project. It did 10, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, it did the elementary schools, the three elementary schools with no additional tax impact because there was enough buildup that fund to mitigate that. Now that fund is, I'm going to assume, being used for Runlet. You have $7.5 million in here. This budget proposes 1.4 million be added to that, bringing you up to almost $9 million in that fund. And also in here is some facility upgrades with a partial use of the school building maintenance fund. So there's two significant funds for the buildings. One are significant capital long-term projects, and then the second is the school building maintenance fund, that if something significant popped up, or we felt there was a one-time item that came there, we would use those funds. We, last June, you made the decision to move money into there that was left over, so you have close to a million in that fund, and that's up significantly. I think our balance was 300,000 at one point. And we're going to take money out of there to start replacing lights. We have already done four of the five elementary schools. We're doing an LED conversion, and that is what we're going to use those funds for. Already building this budget is 250,000. We're going another 290 above that, and we're going to mitigate that, and you'll see it further in the slide, with money out of that fund. What-if? So this was something that, as we all sat and talked about, we wanted to say if there was no change in the debt service. If you remember, the board took action early on, a little over a year ago, to put us in a financial position to refinance the elementary schools. If we had not done that, if we made no change to benefits, other than everything that had, was, was listed, if we didn't make any change in professional services, no purchase services, no supplies, books, utilities, we just basically took the current budget and flipped it over and then gave the contractual raises, whatever the benefit increases were, didn't touch anything. Dues and fees, principal, kept the transfers the same, you'd be looking at a 6.62% tax increase right out of the gate, 4.2 million dollars, if we did nothing. Okay? So we wanted to just show you where we started from, and I want to highlight the big items. The salaries, up 1.1 million. Health insurance, 551,000. Teacher, non-teacher New Hampshire retirement, $361,000 increase. It's almost a 40% increase. And the New Hampshire retirement teachers, a million 32. Overwhelming majority of that number, which you'll see in a later slide, is because the rate changed. I want to say it's the highest increase since they downshifted the whole 25% that they used to pick up. Okay? And then with state adequacy, we're down at 1.1 million. So that gives you a 4.2 million dollar impact right out of the gate. Okay? Now, some staff changes. As I mentioned, we're making an addition of a .4 to that ELO coordinator, moving it from a .6 to a 1.0. At the elementary teachers, there'll be a reduction of two teachers, those locations to be determined, and that's due to enrollment. That's something we go through every year. Two middle school teachers, again, based on enrollment, and you see those decrease amounts. And then if you remember, the last budget, there was an increase to a teacher for the hearing impaired that was put in the budget as a one-year-only at the very end. There was .2 out of the general fund and .2 out of the, out of a grant, IDEA grant. We're proposing to continue that. So that's the value of that .2, we're just showing you that, but it's not necessarily an increase because it was already in last year's budget. Okay? And then we need to move the theater arts teacher from the CRTC, the final third of their salary, we need to move into the, into the general fund budget because you only get three years with that program in the Perkins grant, and then after that, it has to be absorbed by the general fund unless there's.
Is that year three?
Yes. Well, let me say this, it's actually year four. We had, because of the budget last year, we, Mr. Rothenberg had made a plea to the state to allow this for one more year, and we got it. So, but this is it, but typically it is a three-year. So these numbers, when you see them, because some people look at it and say, I don't make that much money, meaning if you have a staff member or somebody else, this includes everything. This is their salary, health, dental, FICA, New Hampshire retirement. It's not just the salary number, okay, that are in path. And again, as I mentioned, the other .02, so that will bring that teacher for the hearing impaired to a 1.0, what, but it's one-year-only, that other .2 will be the same, it'll go back into that grant. That is what the plan is right now. And then, as we mentioned, the SAP counselors, they are something that started out as a grant. We had picked up a portion of that, and that goes down a little bit each year. This is now, the general fund needs to pick up the whole thing. Yep, good.
I just want to say, because we're using some acronym, we're switching some letters here, substance abuse prevention counselors. There's one at the middle school full-time and one at the high school full-time. We've been lucky enough to have a grant for a number of years. The district paid a portion in the budget, and the rest came from the grant. The state is, that, that grant is potentially, we think it's not going to be available, it's possible it will be, but we need to make sure, we assure that, that we have those important resources at the middle and at the high school.
Okay?
Jack.
Jack.
Yep, okay. All right, I'll go on with Gina first. Go ahead, Gina.
Oh, I just wanted to ask if people could be sure to speak into the microphone?
Sure. You hear me okay?
I can hear you. I almost, I caught almost nothing that Donna said.
Okay. Is that, is that mic on?
I think it's on. Can you hear me now?
It's on.
Gina, can you hear?
Not really.
Oh, okay. It's broadcasting in here.
We'll swap it out. We'll ask them to swap it out. Maybe it's a weak mic or no battery.
All right.
Get that one.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you, Gina. Is that it? Did you, did you need that repeated, what she said?
Yeah, I think we need to repeat that. Let's try with this mic.
This one, Gina? No, this one doesn't sound as good, I think, but Gina, can you hear?
Vaguely better.
Subs, SAP is substance.
Okay, get that off.
SAP is substance abuse prevention counselor. There's one full-time at the elementary, at the middle school, and one full-time at the high school. That's what SAP counselor means.
Jack, what I was just going to ask is, what does FTE stand for?
Full-time equivalent.
Okay, thank you.
So of those major funds, this is a breakdown of what those budgets are and the difference between the two. But as you can see in our overall budget of the three funds, 94% of that is the general fund. Then you have a small portion for food service and a small amount that comes from grants. All right? But overall, we're looking at a little under a 3% increase overall, but a little more above 3% of the general fund for this coming year. All right? I'll quickly try to go through these, just a high level. So this is the breakdown of the expenditures, as we mentioned before with the legislature. We're at a 78.08% salary and benefits. You have 14% for contracted service, a little more than 5% for debt, but what this doesn't account for is the revenue that comes in to offset that. We do a formula that gives you that. You're only seeing the one side right now because there is some revenue that comes in to offset that debt service. And then your dues, fees, and transfers, which you'll see in another slide. But as we mentioned, 1.1 in salary increases. New Hampshire retirement for teachers, over a million. Healthcare, over half a million. 360,000 for non-teacher New Hampshire retirement. Fortunately, there's been no change in the life of disability because we had bid that out the year before and got a guaranteed two-year rate, so there's no increase, but that amount is about 150, 60,000 a year. And then small increase in the dental, and we have a decrease in our workers' comp, which is good. For contracted services or maintenance supplies, part of this increase is there's an increase in, out-of-district placements, some of it to other LEAs, which are local education agencies, and out-of-district tuition. And I'll address that a little further along. Small decrease in natural gas, small decrease in voice, and an increase in the vehicle and insurance, vehicle and property insurance. There's no new debt planned for the debt service, and with contingencies, transfers and everything, we're 2.2 million. This does include a 1.4 million dollar transfer into the facilities and renovation trust fund. All right? So there's that proposed, that number, 90,439,332. Now, we're going to take you what the expenditures are by function. So first thing we'll hit upon is regular education.
Excuse me?
Yep.
When we get into the other meetings, are we going to have more detailed breakdown by line item?
I'll show you what we give, what we give you Monday night, but yeah, it's not.
And, and year-to-year comparisons and trends? Great.
Yep. So you could see the regular ed going up about 1.4 million or 4.68. This is for, projected to have 4,040 students, up a little bit at the elementary, down at the middle, and down at the high. And Donna, if you want to elaborate a little bit more, hopefully they can hear you, based on, these projections are based on the schools calling parents and being conservative on who we think is coming back.
Yeah, I can't really anything to that. That's very, that's very clear. As we get into the enrollment nights or different days of the budget, we can get more detail, but this is pretty conservative. This is each principal administrator looking very closely at the number of students they have. We also, I also provided them with five-year trends for kindergarten first, fifth to sixth, and eighth to ninth, so they were able to look at that because the trends are a little off now with COVID, so they needed some data to, to try to project where we were going to be.
And the enrollment budget session is March 10th, so I note that on there. That's where we'll get more detail into that. If I move on next to the special education, again, as I mentioned before, that's up a little over a million. We have an increase in tuition to other LEAs, as I mentioned, and also an increase in the out-of-district placements. And what we're doing is we're proposing to transfer money from the special education trust fund to offset this increase because we believe, one, it's probably affiliated with COVID, and two, that we could probably get these students back if we're back full-time. And if we're not, well, then we're not impacting the local taxpayer on it because we're pulling it from a trust fund that you have to mitigate it. Because we do think it's an anomaly because of what's going on, so we don't want to artificially increase the budget.
And can we use federal funds if it's COVID-related to pay for these expenses?
If we can find out it's directly COVID-related, yes.
But it, right now, it's just coming out of the trust fund.
Correct. Correct. Because we want to make sure we have clarity on what, about 500,000 left of the ESAR 1 money, and now we got to see what are the rules around the ESAR 2 money.
And there is likely an ESAR 3?
Well, we talked about that. We tried not to get too ahead of ourselves, but yeah, we agree. And we don't know the length of this, the second, we know ESAR 1 is 930, 21, but I don't think, we still don't know the second round of funding, how long we have with that. We heard it's longer, but we're waiting to see those details. And again, the student services budget will be discussed on February 15th. Move on to CRTC. Tried to give a little plug for them. I went on their website and grabbed their little virtual preview days as they're trying to get their enrollments for next year. Small increase of 33,000, a 1.9%. Most of that is because, again, we've added into the general fund that salary, so it's now under their program. Other than that, they probably would have been down. But all other lines are level-funded, and we're hoping to use, again, this COVID money, the Perkins, to be able to mitigate whatever other unknowns that start coming across. Same thing with the co-curricular. The increase in salary and benefits is the only thing that went up here. Every, all the other lines, everything else is staying the same. For support services, the focus here, as we talked about under the goals of technology, although this is showing an increase of.
Excuse me?
Yep?
Is summer school considered a co-curricular?
That's where we budget it, under the accounting document, yeah. So for support services, this is where technology falls, as well as these other programs. As you can see, it's up about 345,000. As I mentioned, you have the replacement of the middle school, staff laptops, and the wireless access points. We're going to pretty much deplete the technology trust fund. We're going to take 439,000 out of there, and we're going to, the wireless access points are partially offset because of a 60%, about 60% reimbursement. So there's 175,000 in the revenue to mitigate that 175,000, I mean, 350,000. So again, other than that, that would probably be down a little bit. But we're just trying to do everything we can to maintain, you know, the stability of the budget and take care of some of these things that are one-off for three or five years. The administration, up 348,000. Again, salary and benefits is going to be a portion of that, but you have the central of the staff, principals, assistant principals, contingencies. But as we mentioned before, and one of the goals is modernizing the human resources department by adding recruiting and hiring software, as well as benefit enrollment software. As part of that recruiting, hiring is also, includes onboarding. Again, all that onboarding stuff right now is manual. So we look at this as a down payment to be able to start making some changes, and again, part of that within influx from the technology trust fund, we hope will help this. We are also looking at COVID-related because of the decrease of personal interaction. Could you say it's COVID-related? We're balancing that. For buildings and grounds, it's down almost a million. This is where the debt service sits. You have these variety of items in, within that budget. These are the various ups and downs. And as I mentioned to you, that what-if scenario, if you hadn't done what you had done with the refinancing, as you can see, the decrease in principal debt and the decrease in interest debt, that helped offset a good day. It helped. As I mentioned, the increase in construction, the 290,000. We're going to use money out of the school building maintenance fund. Normally, we, we budget just 250 to do summer projects. So that's what Matt has to do to deal with, I think it's like 1.1 million square feet of buildings. It's not a lot, but this year, we felt okay with some of the lighting projects and some other things, we'll put a little bit more to take off things that are not more every annual, something that goes out longer.
In the, the school building maintenance trust fund is different than the one that will have 9 million after this year, correct?
Correct.
What, how much is in the school building maintenance trust?
Almost a million right now because you had made a deposit into there at the end of the year with savings. The only thing that normally, when we deposit money, we either do it one of two ways, three ways you can. You either plan for it in a budget, we typically don't move money over there in the budget during this process. But in October, once the tax rate setting happens, the board may look at those trust funds and say, you know, is there a recommendation to put any of them because of their balances? So that's one. The other thing that goes in there every year, I should say is part of the budget, is we charge a capital fee to gear field for every student that comes through, and that amount we come in and goes right out. And this year, it's about 85,000 because they don't pay for any debt. Any debt we take on is not counted in their tuition. It's something that's excluded. But because we have them, we do get 40% aid instead of 30% building aid. Okay? But that's the only thing that's pretty much goes in, goes right out, and you'll see that in the transfers, and I note that. Okay? And again, we also, you'll see in the transfers, we still put that 1.4 million dollars away. Okay? Moving on to transportation, just some stats from our friend, Mr. Karate. You know, we have the increase in salary and benefits of 176, but we don't, we have an increase in auto insurance. We have in here to purchase one replacement van, but that's, we always budget 10,000, so it's not an increase. I just want to reflect that we just put a holder in there because you may have seen them sitting outside the high school, the little vans with the little bus flap thing, the school bus that pops up. We have about four of those. And then what we did do, and that's part of contributing to the increase, we took it out of facilities, the comp, which is the common operations maintenance facility that the city owns. We pay a lease to them, and it was under facilities. And, but our facilities folks don't use that. They have a facility up by Millbrook that we own. It's only transportation, and we felt that it belonged really in the rental and land building. It belonged under transportation. So when you see in the line item budget, you're going to see a 69,000 dollar decrease in transportation for their rental of land and building, and you're going to see a 71,000 dollar increase here because, one, that was last year's rate, and two, because we took it out and moved it here. Okay. Benefits. Now, this isn't, this is, these are what the manual stuff that we budget for. So severance, we did not make any change in severance. We budget 455,000, some odd dollars. I think it's 455, 534 for severance. That's people that leave, we pay out their sick days or whatever, their contractual to be paid. There's an increase in the CEA. There's an increase in the CEA VSS. And what we do to budget that is we look at the top 10 people. We look at what they would be entitled to get, and then that's what we base it on. And it's 1,500 more.
So Jack, that's the CEA veteran salary scale?
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the budget increase-decrease, so I wanted to explain this portion. So the health insurance for retirees, we normally budget between 450 and 500. And it's been going down. 10 years ago, it was close to 800,000. And we've been following that trend as it goes down because fewer and fewer people are retiring. When the state had a benefit under New Hampshire Retirement where they would pay a portion of the health, that's where we really saw that retiree, those payments. But as soon as that ended, peer staff seemed to stay longer and don't retire as early. So the expense hasn't been as high. So it seems to be going down and down. We budgeted in this budget 450. Last year, I had in our, in our files to put at 475. And it didn't get put in here. It got put in under the General Health Insurance. Because when I saw the difference, and it showed a $362,000 increase, and I thought, something ain't right. And I knew what we budgeted here. And when we go and we do these budgets, and that's with this little explanation down here, is we compare original budget to original budget. Not an adjusted budget to an original budget. Because that's our base that we go back to and analyze those. So that's why, if it gets put in after, I can't reflect that. So that's the difference. It was just in the wrong fund.
So Jack, the, the health insurance for retirees under 65, per our contracts, teachers can retire at 53?
I think it's 55.
55? I thought I read 53.
It might be 50. Now, 53 is when, 53 in 17 years, they're eligible for VSS. Benefits always go, yeah.
And then, so this would be those people who retired between the ages of whether it's 50-
50 or 55.
50 or 55, and 65?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And depending on the CBA and depending on the age, we pay for 60, anywhere from 50 to 65% of their medical for a single or two-person plan up until the age of 65. But as I said, that's been going down. And, you know, we have people going out, people coming on. So it's somewhat stable right now, and we think we could drop that another 25. The other piece is, after this budget, you'll have about 2 million into your Health Risk Reserve, which was originally created when you were self-funding, which is what you're doing with this. You're self-funding it. So if things got a little wacky, we have that fund to go to. So that's the other reason for making these adjustments. So, our favorite topic, New Hampshire Retirement. So the employee, the employer rates, which is what the district pays, depending on the type of employee it is. So the first one you have is the teacher rate. So all our teachers are in there. And I want to say most of the certified staff, that would be our administrators. Two years ago, they moved the business administrators into there as well, superintendents. So that rate for 2022 is, and 2023, because when they set the rate, it's for two years. It's 21.02 cents of every dollar that we pay in salary will go towards New Hampshire Retirement. That rate is an increase of 3.22%, which is currently at 17.8%. Before that, it increased 0.44% from 1736 to 1780. And going back to FY18, it increased from 1567 to 1736. So in this budget, it's almost over 6.9 million dollars just for New Hampshire Retirement.
And we have no control over that.
We have no control. It's in the legislature. We have no choice.
So literally, in those four years, we've had to come up with an extra $7 million a year?
No, no.
Or $7 million total?
That's what we pay total now.
Total, okay.
If I go back, I'd probably say we were in probably in the low fives.
So, so in other words, in those four years, we've seen a very significant increase in the amount that we've had to pay.
Yep.
And that passes straight on to taxpayers, right? Or however we budget it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it affects the grants, it affects everything. Food service. So then you have the second category, which are the not, they call the non-teacher rate. So that's all our support staff, non-certified staff. That's going up 2.89% from 11.17 to 14.06. It did go down in the previous two-year cycle. But it increased in the cycle before that, as you look at both of them there. Right now, based on this budget, it's 1.2 million dollars we'll pay to New Hampshire Retirement. So the budget impact, just because the rate changed, if you took them side by side and said, if the budget went up, but the rate stayed the same, there was a number. This is the difference between the new rate and the old rate. Which causes an impact of over 2%.
So this is if salaries didn't change at all, they would, this, this would still go up 1.3 million dollars, 2.08%?
Yep.
And then if salaries do go up, it'll go up even more?
Right, which we've common for, yeah.
Thank you.
So the employee rates changed in 2012. They went from 5% to 7%, and that's still the same. I did put the contribution rates, you can see the announcement, if that link I think should be clickable. It will be online, but I think it's clickable on yours. And then you can see, New Hampshire Retirement also has an estimate that they would earn about 6.75% return on investment. It was 1.1% last year. If I had to guess, and trust me, if I had a crystal ball, I probably wouldn't be sitting here and knew. But it wouldn't shock me that in two years, we're going to see rates go up again. Unless there's an impact. There are still 18 years left on the debt to pay to make the New Hampshire Retirement System 80% solvent. That debt will be paid off in 2039. 75% of that rate is for debt. And you don't have any control over it. And then you can control the contractual raises, which would impact that, but that's it.
So, Jack, just let me, just make a comment in that there is a bill in for the state to pick up 15% of the retirement. So Jack and I talked about that today, and we'll watch that bill. And if necessary, we've got some great data to be able to testify, and we will testify because this is really, really difficult increase to take on. And like Jack said, I anticipate in two more years, we're going to see another significant increase. So we'll, we'll support that bill, and I'm assuming you would all agree with that.
Do you have the bill number?
No, I'll put it in my weekly report, though, because I have the list upstairs. So off the top of my head, I don't know. But in my weekly report, I'll put it in. Thanks, John.
Okay. All right, I'll move on to the transfers. This is what I mentioned as far as, this is on the expense side of the transfers. Money that we put into the trusts. So as I mentioned, into the School Buildings and Renovation Trust Fund, there's the balance, 99, 99, 99,000. I knew it was almost a million. There's the 85,000 that we'll collect in fees that we plan on depositing. There's the 1.4 million to deposit into your Facilities and Renovation Trust Fund. Again, that'll bring you almost to 9 million for a run-up project, if that's what you wish. And then here is the VOKE capital fee. These are the fees that are charged for the sending districts. So it doesn't have a tax impact because what we collect, it comes in and then goes right into the trust fund to improve CRTC programs. And then the Food Service Fund. So that is not a trust fund or anything. It is just, it's a federal fund that manages the Food Service Program. But we have been budgeting some type of money to move over there in the event it's needed. I anticipate this year will be significant. Depending on how we come back, this might not be enough. But to mitigate it, I am going to pick up the medical, the 77,761. We're going to pick up the medical from the Food Service Program to give it some support. But if we ever hear like this year, it's going to need more than that. Again, just trying to-
And is that driven by not buying, not having as many kids getting lunch every day? Or is it driven by that we're giving lunch to every kid and not getting reimbursed for that?
No, we, we get reimbursed $3.58 for every person. The advantage of that is-
For every kid?
For every kid, regardless of their status, where they live, doesn't matter.
3.58?
$3.58.
A week, good.
Per meal, per meal, sorry.
Per meal, okay.
So when, and we'll, we'll do a highlight of that showing you when we're in a normal time. I did do a slide in June that showed what a normal way it looks like and what we're doing now. Because this all kicked in right after March last year. The issue is, when you have the kids in school, you do 2,800 to 3,000 meals a day district-wide. Now we're doing about 11, 1200. It's just not enough to offset the salaries and benefits and the supplies. The one thing we are putting in supplies under COVID, because we wouldn't have the significant number we have, is the packaging. Of what, two packaging machines under the COVID funds? The framing and all the packaging materials as we buy them, we're using the COVID funds. Now, anything we're going to go back and look is this money because we're trying to balance it. If there's things that we can do, if they say, okay, you're allowed to start picking up the delivery transportation, because you're not supposed to pick up stuff that's budgeted. But we also didn't go in the 21 budget and budget for, to have to do all of that work. You know, it was to be transporting kids to and from school, not delivering meals. So those are the things we're looking at to see if we can reclassify that. Because we have time right now to be able to do that.
So Jack, one of the biggest issues is the fact that we're doing so many less meals because kids who are at home, who normally would be in school and buying meals at the cafeteria, you know, are just going to the refrigerator and picking up, you know, something to eat. And so that big drop this year is associated with that. If we brought kids back to school in September 4, we would expect it to jump back up to 3,000 meals, correct?
If we were back full-time, there's no kids that are staying remote. I mean, yeah, a big, big assumption there.
That's the big, yeah, but that's the big drop that's causing it.
And again, what we've tried to mitigate, and we've done it through attrition. We've not let any of the staff go. If somebody's left, we've not replaced them. But I will tell you this, if you were to say, hey, next Monday, you need to, we're coming back full-time. Say, I don't have enough staff to run it as if it was in the school. We normally have 32, we're down to 26, but it's very difficult when you only have in an elementary school, one cook. They call it sick. They got to do all that prep. Usually it's the head cook and an assistant, especially at the elementaries. There's two at every one. So it'd be a little difficult to ramp up for that. But I have no doubt that if it, if we had to do something, we would. But we couldn't stay at the levels we're at, we'd have to hire. But we're trying to avoid that at this point in time. They're getting through. Great group.
But you don't anticipate that we are overstaffed and that, you know, we're going to drop in meals again and not need as many staff? You think we're kind of at a steady state now for the, the type of education we're doing right now, which is the hybrid remote?
The big thing is just trying to keep everybody employed, being able to feed the kids at school and at home. That's been the priority. And trying to go any lower would cause somebody to either be laid off. But also, I'd worry about if we can start stepping up, bringing more kids back. We might not be able to handle it. And then you're kind of defeating your purpose. But they have been, they've been with us throughout this, and it's been much appreciated. But-
Thank you.
So again, this is the explanation of each of those transfers. And as I mentioned, the big one, 1.4 million, keeping the board's goal of 5%. The 85,000 comes in, goes out. The VOKE, again, collected from sending schools and goes into the VOKE Trust Fund. The Food Service Fund is, even though that's coming from the general fund, I'm using the Health Risk Reserve to pick that up. So I'm making it a wash. So again, it doesn't affect the tax rate. Doing it one-year-only, but at least put some money into that fund. Because it is at a deficit right now. All right?
So Jack, going, before you jump away from that, that's just money transferred in. You're going to spend some of those trust funds in this budget, didn't you say?
No, yeah.
So we didn't, we didn't do the deductions. This is just what we're putting in, right?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to see the lump sum number.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear for anybody who was following, you know, on television or something.
This is the expense side. This is what we're putting in. In the revenues, we're going to see what's coming out.
Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Yep, okay. So this is a summary of the budget by grouping, which is what we did when we took you through each of the expenditures by function. We did regular ed and then special ed, Student Services, VOKE. So that's each of the lines that totals and comes down to that 90 million, 439. Again, up 3.12%. And then this is the same thing, just viewed differently. This is by object. Okay? That you, when you look at the principal and transfers, that was the big savior on this year. Refinancing the debt. And you had a little debt fall off, but that refi is big. Okay? Now I'll move on to the revenues that offsets this. I think there's only two slides, so I'm at seven, I'm at 646, so I got to turn it on. Okay. My animations are out of order, I apologize. So for the local, we're going to expect to raise an additional $324,000 in local revenue. And a lot of that is contributed to the Deerfield, Regular Ed, and Special Ed. On the state side, again, if you saw that CAD Ed, it says down a million. And then there's some other items that are down a little bit as well. So that's the 1.2 million dollar decrease. On the federal side, we'll still get our Medicaid, our E-rate, and our bond interest rate rebate for the, what's called the Qualified School Construction Bond. That's the bond that paid for Remlett's HVAC 12, 13 years ago. But the BAB subsidies, so you're seeing that decrease is because we no longer have that Build America Bond subsidy, which was all part of the Obama administration. They created these Build America Bonds. And when we built the elementary schools, that's what we borrowed the money. And you would get a, I think it's 6.9% rebate up to it. So we're getting about 700 some thousand. When we refinanced, all that went away. But we went from 3.62% down to 1.43%. So we've more than made that up. That's why you're going to see a negative, because we don't get that. But savings far outweigh keeping that, excuse me, keeping that rebate. Okay? And then on the transfer side, we transferred 323,840. This year, we're going to transfer over 2 million into your budget. But as I mentioned, we try to do it on one-offs, whether it's a maintenance and building thing or technology. And right now, it's kind of just, it's like a seesaw, just trying to balance, okay, we take this out, but if the revenues come in, then we don't need to take as much out of the trust. But to just put it all on the local right now with so many unknowns, it just didn't make sense. And I was trying to look for an animated GIF that had all the little levers moving. I do have it, but I couldn't paste it in here because it was one of those pay ones. But just imagine that. That's what we're doing. That's what we're trying to do. And then for the unassigned fund balance or unreserved fund balance, I'm expecting we'll have almost 300,000 more savings than we did for this current budget.
Jack, what, so what's not illustrated here is the government aid for COVID, correct?
Correct, correct. I think I noted that or noted somewhere here. In my other considerations and unknowns, I'll note it. Because it was just announced, what, last Friday? We just had a discussion administratively to go through, you know, what are innovative things that we can do? One-offs, that kind of stuff. So we're starting to build through that now. But, you know, all that will do, we think, is help not put the pressure on this. And that's what we're, we're taking some risks here. But the risk is, is between your trust funds, the COVID money, and trying to stabilize the budget, not saying, you know, that what-if, and just saying, I have a local pick it up. That's what we're trying to do.
We're really committed to leveraging those funds from COVID the best we can. But, you know, there are going to be very specific governance in that grant that we must follow. So it's not just an open, you know, here's your check and go at it, you know? It's, there are going to be specifics- It's, there are going to be specifics that we're gonna have to follow. But so that's why we were a little hesitant to show too much here.
Until you really know.
Right, until we know, and, and we haven't even received that. All we got so far was just the number that we would, we would get as a school district. So we have not received the total application, they're still working at through Washington. They, New Hampshire has to submit some paperwork and then, and they have thirty days to do that and then it comes back to us. So I don't anticipate seeing it until the end of March.
So now the tax impact. Um, so here's a history going back to nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, uh, of those rates. So for the local rate, we're gonna be looking at a thirty-nine cent increase or a two point nine seven percent. State, which again, I'm no control over because it's just based on the valuation, there's a lump sum money. The state issues a warrant article and says, this is how much you have to raise, which is seven million, three hundred and eight thousand. So it's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars less in state education tax. That's it. It doesn't mention what the percentage is or anything else. That's the amount has to be raised from, uh, conquered taxpayers, you have no choice. So that is a decrease of eleven cents or five point eight eight. When you combine everything, we're looking at about a one point eight seven percent increase in taxes. For ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents on the local, the decrease of twenty-seven fifty from the state. Given an impact of about seventy dollars.
On a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property.
Correct.
Assess the property. That's, uh, I'm glad, you know, I'm concerned about taking money out of trust funds. But the one point eight seven percent is better than I had expected, to be quite honest, Jack.
We figured you would think that.
Yeah.
As I.
I was very concerned with the amount of expenditures that we have to spend, that we put in there this year. And the fact that, um, you know, what you showed us earlier were salaries and benefits going up six percent or over six percent this year without any, anything at all. I was very concerned that it would be even higher. Not that I like increasing taxes by, uh, one point eight seven percent, but, um, at the rate. But, uh, given this year, I'm not.
Well, you figure if this is the base, you have the ability to touch in October. Again, everything we're pulling out of those trust funds are to mitigate the risk of, of, you know, the technology. You know, we've talked about, why not put the technology in there? If we're gonna be doing remote learning, we probably could do that. But we don't know yet, so that's why you're seeing these trust balances come down. But if in fact these numbers come in, we wind up not touching that, that replaces it. Because again, we focused on the one off stuff.
Well, and with, when we created the technology trust, it was with the understanding that there would be a few, two or three years or so of being able to contribute money to it. Uh, in order to even out the big expenditure year, which unfortunately we're facing this year. But that's why we created that to sort of smooth that curve as far as year to year, um, expenditures with regards to the technology. Basically because when you go in and redo the, uh, the wifi and the wireless, you don't do
a little, you know, one third or one fifth, you go in and do it.
Okay.
And we don't touch it again for five years. It's hard to believe though, huh? Five years and it's old. But yeah, okay?
Thank you.
So there is the summary of the expense and all the different revenues. Again, that all comes with that ninety million dollars. And then this is your breakout of, um, your operating budget. Less, and then what the, uh, operating debt service. So you see your debt service went down, one point three million dollars.
Refinancing last year saved us a lot of money.
You're not kidding. Again, we've still put in the trust, we're still, uh, maintaining some money into building, maintenance trust. The VOKE, they're okay, and the food service fund. So we just look at this as, we're still gonna continue to move things along. I mean, this, this will probably, this may even change between now and the time you pass at March twenty-fourth. But it will definitely change between March twenty-fourth and October.
Can, can I give a couple of examples of that, Jack? Thank you. Um, for instance, in special ed and our art district placements, we know there are youngsters that are art district placed that either moved from another district in the middle of COVID or are ready to come back, but to, to, to Concord. But you know, you couldn't move them during this time, it was just, that was not feasible. But, um, Bob and, um, Bob met with the team and, um, feels that there are students that can come back. That's gonna be a savings for you on that art district tuition account. And so I think those are the areas that we couldn't really nail down. But, um, we know that over time, as we get closer and closer to those final decisions on IEPs, we'll, we'll have a better number for you. Um, but tho- those are the kinds of things that have affected us. I, I guess my advice too for you is about stability. You know, you've really tried to work really hard this year to stabilize in a lot of different areas. And I think the budget is one of the areas, given your enrollment is pretty flat, you saw the numbers. Um, we'll have more detail with, for you when we do the enrollment. But, um, those, those, those areas impact you as you present your budget. So that's why you're seeing, um, we took as, as a conservative approach on it. Um, given the, you know, given the environment right now, given the climate, um, given the concerns in the city. Um, uh, we felt that that would be the best route for us to go. But I think there's still some room in this budget to look at a little bit more.
If you remember, in June, we put two point four million into those trust funds. So it wound up being, a couple wins wound up having them. One, you have it to move forward. Two, we were in the process of refinancing. So the S and P rating agencies, which I meant to include a slide on there, their quotes were, we had healthy reserves. We had the proper planning during the COVID. And I explained everything we were doing and that picked up and that helped with the bond rating. So the way I look at it, we used it, but we also, as much as, yeah, it might be nice to hold on to it, considering the environment. When I get to my knowns, knowns and unknowns stuff, you'll see why we feel that, you know, you're putting it away, come down. We get to the end of the year, you know, say we're three million, you may put those into the trust and just kinda whittle it down and spread this out. So again, we always talked about, we don't want those heart monitor things where we're just bouncing all over the place. That's what we're trying to avoid.
So much of this budget, and this is something that I learned, you know, you work in a district for twenty, thirty years, Brenda, you'll know what I'm going with here. You think you understand it and know it, and then you look at this and you realize it's like, uh, before digital photography when you were, had your hands in a black bag in a room with a red light because you wanted to develop pictures, you can't see. So much of this process takes place in this black bag, you know, what is the city assessments are gonna be. And all these things that we rely on to set a good budget, we have no idea today what they'll be. So I do feel, um, that those, those decisions have been handled well by our boards in the past. Because I think we've always tried to, how, how can we, how can we mitigate big changes from one year to the next? Oh, good, we had a low tax rate this year, but next year we're gonna get, you know, knocked over by it. So I, I just, that's what stands out to me in all of this, all of the information that we have. And we only have about half of what we need to really set a budget, you know, with those specifics.
No, you're, you're right in that we have a, we have a high degree of uncertainty at this particular time. And I appreciate the conservative approach to, to help mitigate, um, that uncertainty. Uh, does, does other board members have questions for the, uh, the business administrator with regards to this general overview?
Yeah, Jack, I want you to know that I was able to watch the whole thing on my computer.
Well, everything is okay.
No, we just gotta get him connected now. I think, oh no, well, he, he saw the shared screen, good.
I was a technical wizard.
Okay, good. Glad to hear it, Mr. Parker, we, we wanted you to be up to speed.
So when we get.
Good, thank you.
When we get into the details, we will have prior years, but prior years budgeted and not actual. Is that what you're saying? Do we get?
I could put whatever you want to be on it.
I mean, I like to see actual, just to understand, um, what we spent in different categories versus what we're budgeting.
But on Monday, I'll show you how I go about managing the district when we're active. And I'll show you all those columns and what you're gonna get. Yeah, so that's not a problem.
So that's a great question though, Jack. The supporting, you know, typically what we get in our packets will be detailed budget.
Usually it's about a two hundred page document.
Right.
And then it has copy of like the property and liability notifications, all the CBA benefits are in there. The history, like some of this tax stuff, all the history. We put all that in the appendices, but then it's all clickable, you click regular education and you see line by line, all the detail. So it's a searchable PDF.
So, so when will that be available to us?
On that, Monday night.
Monday night, excellent.
Presentation.
And then, um, if anyone has other specific items that would be, such as historical expenditures. Um, we can just add, they can just ask you or we can ask you, shoot an email off to, to Jack.
The other thing, documents, PDF in the corner, there'll be a little question mark, if you just hit it. And you add, it'll pop up in your email and you could shoot a question and it comes right to the administration, right from the document.
That's convenient. Try not to abuse it.
I think he doesn't offer us, previously, years past, he has offered us a actual dashboard where you could just plug and play all kinds of things. And we just abused the daylights out of it on that. So he hasn't offered us that because we.
I felt like I was going through a drive-through at McDonald's. Give me a number two, give me a number nine. I, I, I thought, ah, but, you know, we did do that one year, but that was the year we were looking to put in full day kindergarten.
Right, we were looking at what cutting, what affects so many different variables at the same time of altering things was, so. But I appreciate your prep, uh, your preparation of this and the amount of work that your staff, please thank all of them. Um, that, uh, they don't get to sit here in this meeting with you, but I know that they worked very hard on this, so.
But many of them I'm gonna lose.
Yeah, I know.
That should be on my known and unknowns. I should have put that down because that's gonna be a challenge, but they're good people.
So, um, and then we'll be getting into, I'm gonna, I know I should be reading ahead because you're gonna jump into this, aren't you? You're gonna talk about what we're doing.
I know we're past our time a little bit, but, and I don't wanna hold you up. But I'm also available anytime, you email me, wanna set up even a remote link or come in, it's fine, man. I'm more than willing to do that. It's a lot to absorb in the first night, that's why, it's like a shock and awe, that's what we do. A little rattle, like what did I get into? But I'll go through quickly the other board considerations and unknowns. So, um, you aren't, have three bargaining units left to negotiate in this, for this coming budget. Um, there are the three CEA, uh, Ciopa, so that's your teachers, your administrative assistants and the food service staff. Um, you've already settled one of them, which was maintenance transportation, so that is done and accounted for. You also have, uh, unaffiliated as well. For the revenues, you know, adequacy, what will the, what will the state use? Uh, we heard from the legislators about a bill to go back to twenty nineteen, we have no idea. Um, you know, we know this number, which is down one point one, but, you know, what could it look like after that? If they make this hole, going back to what you were saying, Jim, we might not need to worry about touching those if they were to say, all right, we're gonna make your hole and bring you that one point one million back. That could change the whole thing.
Your assumption here though is that things, things stay the same.
Absolutely. All right, and then you have local fees, you know, you're gonna see when we give you that detail. Normally athletics, about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars gets raised. I only put it at seventy, because that's where I pegged we're gonna be at now. Don't know, if we come back wobbly, it's just, it's a domino effect. Um, you know, whether it's transportation charter, I put no money in from preschool, usually we get thirty, forty thousand from the preschool program. I put no tuition dollars because we haven't had those kids in. If we do, that's additional revenue. CRTC summer program, that's like sixty grand, I did not put any of that in. But if it comes in, again, just filling it up, now it goes the other way. That's all we're trying to do, we're thinking about all those things, but I can't bank on it. So I'm just trying to mitigate, and if it does, I can ease the transition. Then you have capital improvements, you know, Runlet, what are we gonna do with that and other facilities? The, the board work session on the tenth. You know, declining enrollment will continue to, to go on, you know, seeing those enrollment numbers, you see we dropped off significantly this year. But, you know, some of the conservative projection brings this back up, but ultimately we're still dealing with that issue of one to two percent. And for every kid, from an adequacy standpoint, that's three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Okay? Oh, David's coming back. Hopefully that's actually him. Um, and then, you know, reopening schools in the fall, this is gonna assume they're gonna reopen. If we open differently, that could impact these numbers too. And then the food service program. David, I think you're gonna have to mute one of the devices.
Thank you.
All right, and then we go to the other three, um, levels. One of which I don't have on here though is the county, um, because there's three other pieces on the tax portion. We have a local education tax, the state education tax, county and the city. So, you know, when you look at the city and the budget, what's the impact been on COVID to the city? We won't know that till June. You know, they're preparing their budget now, so we've tried to factor that in mind as well as we've developed this. Um, and also Kathleen and I just last week met with, uh, Thomas Bell and, and Brian Lebrun. We do have conversations with them, I talked to Brian, who's the deputy city manager of finance. We are coordinating, so I think it's important for people to understand, we do do that, we do communicate. We are trying to be very cognizant right now. You know, we think about the business owners right now, downtown, commercial. Um, all, variety of things get, uh, we have in those conversations just to say, okay, how do we go and, and do this? And we give them a heads up, this is what we're looking at, just so you know, um, for our budget. And they've talked to us, what are your impacts? And we've told them ours as it relates to, you know, they have the same problem, New Hampshire retirement, health, salaries, those three are the biggies.
Jack.
Yeah.
Under the capital improvements, if the board votes to go ahead with the whole interactive meeting with groups for Runlet, the new middle school, is that gonna be taken out of the, the trust for the potential middle school or is that gonna be additional money that will have to be added?
Was that, did this come out of your capital facilities meeting?
The schematic.
Yeah.
Yeah, you mean schematic design.
Thank you, thank you.
So you, you have a couple ways you can go. And this'll really be the conversation I have with the financial advisor, depends. So you have the ability to do what's called a bond anticipation note, they call it a BAN, B-A-N. And that's what we did twelve years ago. It's where you borrow money very cheaply, my guess is it's probably gonna be a quarter to a half a percent. You can borrow that money and you have up to five years to use that money for planning and development. And then you can roll it into a bond. They may say, keep those in reserve, they may say, no, take them out and use that money. Depends on what you want for cash flow, I, I can hear Cinder in my mind right now, what she's gonna say. So that will depend. They may say, yeah, use the, use your money and then you'll borrow and reimburse the fund later on. You have a number of tools on a municipal side that will work with them and figure out what's the best path. One, to look good to the rating agencies, and two, to keep cash available in the event we needed. Because I'm gonna guess that's probably six, eight hundred thousand dollars schematic design, yeah. I mean, you have nine million, but if I take it out of that and then I reimburse later, you know, you got the whole building aid. There's a number of things that factor in. But the bottom line is if you wanted to move forward, we'll make that happen.
So we'll decide.
Yeah.
Um, based on recommendations from the finance committee, which will be based on recommendations from our bond.
Our financial advisors.
Our financial advisors, so.
Okay. And then again, on the state side, they're by annual budget, what's that impact look like? And the biggie, legislation. You know, we heard fifteen percent, we hear million, make hole for New Hampshire retirement. We hear, um, the, uh, legislation that could impact the other way. That's relates to being able to use public money for other schools or picking up some type of New Hampshire retirement or keeping a stable on the adequacy. And then on the federal side, it's our Medicaid funding, they continue to tweak those schools, uh, tweak that funding as it relates to, um, Medicaid. And then grant funding, we've heard S one, S two, there'd be S three, is there other grants that are gonna be out there? Um, the after-school program, um, road broken, broken ground, at the end, the end of five years? Yeah, this is their, this would have been the end of five years and we gotta see whether that gets renewed. Again, we mentioned the federal stimulus, uh, funding, this one. And if they come out with this new one, this one, one of those, it's one, one point nine trillion, is there gonna be infrastructure in there? So then what does that do, your school project or other things? So just a couple of things to think about.
Jack, can I ask a question? You assumed in this budget, if I go back to the earlier slides, the reduction of four teachers.
Correct.
Based on our. Based on our reduction in enrollments at this time and where we are. Uh, did you put something into the superintendent's, uh, contingency fund? And if so, what was in this? And is that a change over last year? Because of, we reduced that, but then we do see a big, uh, a sudden increase in enrollment or partial increase of that in enrollment. That's where we would have to take the money to be able to hire additional teachers to keep our school class sizes within our limits. So when you get to that point of the budget, if you could just explain what that contingency fund looks like, I'd appreciate it.
I'll put that under for Monday night with the.
Okay, thank you.
But it, it is in there, and the only reason it went up is because salaries and benefits went up. It's about an eighteen thousand dollar difference. But I have, you know, all the components that we normally budget are in there.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Jack or special requests? Go ahead.
I have one on the budget work schedule and the documents. Is it possible to post this, these documents before the meeting for, if there are people at home who want to follow along? I, I can imagine watching this on the TV, your TV, and trying to see the numbers would be difficult.
Normally I try to do that before. It's the opening presentation that I don't, only because.
Okay.
I want you to be, I don't want to put, uh, people in freak mode, and the next thing you know, they're all going after you because we went a little wild.
If it, if it's going forward, that's great.
And I'll show you where that is, I, that's my, you know, I'm going to go through right now the work session schedule.
Perfect, and by the way, thank you for the administration for not going a little wild. We appreciate it.
We wanted, we, we were somewhat confident you might be, you know, somewhat comfortable with this, but, uh, we always like when you initially hear this, because this is what's going to be the headlines. This is the one, and this is what people will remember to start, unless you really go off the rails. But, um, so we want you to be comfortable with it. And plus, when I'm looking, I, I, I want to say where I did in the opening slide under the facilities thing, something is not right in there. I think I've shown you a hidden slide that I did not update a section. So little errors like that, I want to make sure I get them right. But other than that, going forward, you'll see in a minute. So there's your sessions for public information. So if you go on the website right now, this has been built, and you can, you'll be able to click the minutes. They'll be on there in the next five or seven, whatever the requirement is, the draft. Then the copy of this presentation will go on in the morning. And then as soon as, uh, Concord TV gets it posted, we'll change that to a video, and then you can click and watch it too. So it's all in one place for folks to watch. But there's the dates of all of them, there's the public hearings, and then we'll post a budget by function and a budget by object as well. Just a raw thing. You see it in a nice Word searchable document. That's searchable, but it doesn't have all the, it's just the raw numbers.
And at the bottom there, that's the path someone would follow if they wanted to get to this screen. Excellent, thank you.
And then if they were happy or not happy about tonight, this is who they call.
Yes.
Okay?
I'll take the happy calling.
And then, um, this is the public hearings. I will create virtual links and we'll do all that and get those posted. But this is where we're looking at right now. One at, uh, Millbrook. So there will not be a live broadcast from there because we can't live broadcast. There's going to be downside when we leave either this building or the high school. Now, you, you feel you want to change that, we can, but, um, the other one was planning to be here. But we may talk about putting that up at the high school. I may have actually did that, but I just didn't change my address.
You mean for public hearing one?
For public hearing two.
Two, the public hearing two is, oh, okay, is that the high school? Yes, we had, we had planned that.
And then you'll come back here for the vote, but after your, uh, public hearing two, there is an open session in between, so if there's feedback that you get, you have the ability to adjust it up. You know, however you need to. But, uh, you know, other than that, if we're in either one of those two locations, we'll be able to livestream. All right, and then we'll coordinate if we need to set up remote sessions for board members for the next one. We'll put something together and let people fill that out, all right? And that's it.
Per usual, Jack, nice job.
Very nice.
It's a team effort.
No, you've done, I recognize that the weeks of work that have gone into this, and I'm sure that we'll see even more as we get into very much into the details on each of these sessions. Uh, does anyone have any other questions for the, uh, the business administrator?
Uh, Jim?
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, the House Bill twenty that they testified to yesterday is going to have another hearing next Thursday. There were significant numbers of people that testified and sent in, um, letters. We call this a voucher bill. That's a chance, it's possible that we'll be losing money if this bill passes. And so, um, if you haven't already registered your opinion, it's, it's still open, um, in the committee, so.
And you're passing, you're passing that on not only to the board, but to the citizens that are watching or listening as well, I assume?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, so, yeah, for sure.
So anybody, not just board?
And.
Right.
Okay, and Mr. Weinberg, you wanted to say something as well?
Just kind of to specify, the next hearing will be next Thursday, the eleventh.
Okay.
And quickly, I don't want to make Jack's life any more busy than it already is, but to new board members, he means it when he says he'll sit with you and explain it. There were two or three times, he made it make sense to me, and that's no easy feat. So if you have questions?
Absolutely, anytime, it's fine.
Makes it the whole thing easier.
Yes, and I would encourage you, as you get a chance, to look into the budget. It may look different than other budgets you have, you have seen because there is a actual state-required structure to this. Not always intuitive when you first look at it. So Jack is certainly, you know, more than willing to explain that as well. So don't wait until just before posting the budget to take a quick look at the budget and go through the details. It's, it's, uh, a little bit complex sometimes, a little different than some of the others. Yes, Ms. Hastings?
Just for clarification, uh, the groups that we're still trying to work contracts with, um, the teachers and, and, and teaching assistants.
Admin assistants, admin assistants and food service, yeah.
Those, um, contracts are for the twenty-one, twenty-two year that we're looking to, or are those for the twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay, so twenty-one, twenty-two, when we say no changes, that's because we already know what the, okay.
They're in, they're in this current budget that you're in right now, yeah.
That's what I wanted to make sure of, thank you.
So even though we decide the amount now, it doesn't affect the budget from another point?
Well, you, you, you haven't decided the amount. I think that's a negotiations committee discussion. We can brief you on where that stands.
But the contract that we, that is listed as far as negotiations, will impact what you presented today.
Absolutely, it will.
Yeah, so it does affect this budget. Yes, this is, so, so any changes, positive or negative, um, I don't ever receive negative, that will add to this budget or will impact this budget as well. As well as if it's a multi-year contract, budget's into the future.
Yeah, it feels like we're doing it for next year, but it's for the next year.
And that's all negotiable. I mean, it could be a one-year, it could be a three-year, it could be a four-year. It's just, whatever you do on those contracts will impact next year, yes.
And, and this may be more Kathleen's on a question, but there were some, the SAP definition was very helpful. I don't know what the extended learning opportunities program is, and maybe some of that will be in the budget documents, but also any descriptors of these programs, you know, that it would be really helpful just to sort of match money with what we're funding and what we're doing.
Yes, exactly, and there'll be a session on that extended learning opportunity within the curriculum when we do the curriculum, um, evening.
Curriculum technology.
Curriculum technology evening.
As we go forward, and it's a great point that, uh, Ms. Walsh makes, especially for people who are watching at home, and, you know, we can at least ask you, um, and are in there looking at that, you know, extended learning is, back in my day was work-study, but, uh, now is, uh, you know, opportunities outside of the, outside of the school.
That's right, internships, independent studies, those kind of.
Yeah, so, uh, um, so if we, as we go through the presentation, if you, in the future presentations, if you see acronyms or something that, uh, we or the community may not understand, if you could please just give a quick definition, that'd be great.
And I'll add this presentation and post it in the morning. I'll put out those acronyms, so that.
That's a great suggestion. Any other questions or comments from, I have to look way down to see, um, the board? Uh, superintendent, do you have anything else for this evening?
No, I don't, sir.
Uh, for our board members that are remote, do you have anything else for this evening? I'll take that as a no. Um, and in that case, uh, in that case, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Okay, so the, uh, motion to adjourn by Ms. Higgins, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hastings. Uh, this can be a, a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone, for our initial session. Have a good evening.
Good job, Jack.